Calling the calendar for agenda for the 1 o'clock PM Health and Human Services Hearing. Present with me are Senators Miley Shimobukul and Vice Chair Senator Henry Aquino. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business 1 PM Friday, March 3rd, Conference Room 224 and video video conference. For those on Zoom, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Testify. Each testify will have two minutes to testify. If there's a technical glitch, except for the nominee you have as long as you want. Okay? Thank you. If there's a technical glitch during your time to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraint. I'll be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed caption does not accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislators website. You'll find a link on the status page for the measure. We appreciate your understanding. And remind you that the committee does have your testimony that I reviewed. I encourage you to use your time to either add additional comments or you can stand on your written testimony. And present with me also is Senator Sharon Moriwaki and Senator Brenton Awah. We have a full conference today. So first up SB 715 relating to health. Designates the month of September as fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness month. So first up, we have State Council on Developmental Disabilities and Support. Okay, nobody up for that? And I don't think anyone else has. Okay, next we have in strong support. The Senate Ka'aha Kene'koa, the third second. Did I just say that? Darrell Chan, Darrell Scoville.
Yes.
You're up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Yes.
Hi guys.
No, you need to speak to the mic. I'm sorry. Unless you decide to stand on your written testimony.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name is Darvin Chan Scoville. I am the volunteer advocate for fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. I have been working to advocate for these children and families for many, many years. And my core and noble objective here is to decrease infants born with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder in Hawaii. Also, this is actually starting to captivate a lot of audience and action also in Washington DC nationally and globally. And I believe that education and knowledge is power. Women do not have all the same menstrual cycle. So there are a lot of unintentional pregnancies that happens. And the fetal alcohol spectrum disorder is a neurological brain damage that happens to the fetus due to the alcohol consumption during pregnancy. The thing about it is if we have this awareness month annually, we can track the education process of what do we flood our communities? What kind of information do we have available? Not only for the women, not only for men, but also for the ones who are non-child bearing years, boys and girls. And then that is my fight is so that with 18,000 infants born in Hawaii, there's almost like 7,000 something babies that has fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. Because nationally, the data statistic nationally is one in every 20 first grader have ASD. And the problem that we have is we do not have data in Hawaii. So I plead with all of you, please pass this. Let me know how I can help to help our community to learn about this disorder. This is actually more prevalent than autism. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up Hawaii Disability Rights Center and Support, Louise Erchuk. Next, we have Hawaii Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorders FASD Action Group, Cleota Brown and Support, Hawaii Public Health Institute and Support, Cards Pintor and Support, Anja Busaki PhD and Support, Kenichi Yabusaki and Support, Tia Ikano and Support, Candace Pang and Support, Robert Armstrong and Support. And we have. Tina Peely and Support, Kathy Doherty and Support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 715? Members, any questions? Okay, Darrell, Ms. Scoville, since you're the only one here for, could you come on up? I have one question. Okay, so State Council on Developmental Disabilities wants $35,000 to have a public awareness campaign. But I want to make sure you understand that if we add in that appropriation amount that kills this bill for this session because lateral deadline has already passed. So are you okay with us not putting in a appropriation amount?
I'm okay with this. Like I said, the goal here is for our state to recognize fetal alcohol spectrum disorder population only because they have not been recognized. And I'm really diligently working on educating them on my own time and my group, where a group of volunteers, please help us, help us. And I think passing it over and just our state alone to recognize that they do exist is enough for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? Can we proceed with decision making on this one bill? Okay, so we're just going to go ahead with decision making on SB 715. Chair's recommendation is to basically just pass it as is. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the both chair votes, I.
Okay, thank you very much. Recommendation of the chairs to pass Senate Bill 715 unamended. Chair votes, I, Vice Chair votes, I. Senator Moriwaki.
Aye.
Senator Shimobukul.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we can go into TM 512. Submitting for consideration and confirmation as Director Department of Human Services, gubernatorial nominee Catherine Betts. Excuse me. So Ms. Betts, why don't you come on up? As the nominee, you are entitled to an opening statement.
Sure. Thank you so much Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Catherine Betts and I have a short written statement that I'd like to share with this committee. So thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to thank you for hearing this TM today. And I'd also like to say my appreciation for being able to share a few words with you today. I could not and would not be considered here today without the incredible team of leaders behind me. The last three years were relentless and difficult. However, they also reminded me of the goodness and kindness of humanity and the many reasons why I chose a career in public service. Sorry. A bit emotional and nervous today.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we noted? The department was tasked with protecting and caring for Hawaii's residents during the global pandemic. We all had initial moments of panic and crisis and terror. We took a deep breath and then we rolled up our sleeves and got to work. We worked evenings, weekends and every other time in between to ensure our safety net services could be accessed and viable for our residents. Our greater community came together to ensure we met the needs of our most vulnerable residents. My Greater DHS Ohana, a team of hardworking, dedicated and caring individuals, came together to ensure a rising sea could lift all boats. Together, we expended hundreds of millions for childcare, P E B T and SNAP benefits. Our Medicaid program now covers 467,000 individuals in the state. Additionally, Hawaii became the first state in the nation to implement Medicaid coverage for residents from compact nations. In our Bez D division, we assisted more than 190,000 individuals to ensure that they could receive supplemental nutritional benefits. And we recently became the first state in the nation to have our pandemic EBT plan approved by the federal government. We worked alongside our legislative partners in the House and Senate to ensure we could use TANIT for housing assistance. And we partnered with our community stakeholders and partners to implement family resource centers and expand civil legal services to houseless individuals. We worked with Department of Health and WIC to ensure that families who are eligible for WIC can also access needed SNAP benefits. And we worked with law enforcement and the AG's office to recover foster youth who are being trafficked on the street. Our Office of Youth Services, Leanne Gillespie is here today. Together, we reached a goal of having zero girls incarcerated for the first time in HYCF history. I have served this department through four different directors and four different governors. And I can safely say that we have changed the way state government functions. By implementing organizational change management, IT modernization and our Ohana Nui framework, we have proven to staff and residents that government does not need to be entrenched in the past, nor does it need to be business as usual. We can think outside of the box. We can care for residents and our staff. And we can do things differently and more efficiently. At the core of the work I do, I always remember survivors. Survivors are why I strive to make a more equitable system and why I care as much as I do about the work this department does. No one should have to navigate a system set up to imitate a labyrinth just to get job training, nutrition assistance and childcare. I've always had the heart of an advocate and I'm grateful for this opportunity to be here today. My vision for the department is simple. We continue to care for individuals and families that need it. We invest in our staff to ensure they're equipped with best practices, trauma-informed care and information to do their jobs well. And we invest in our technology to continue desiloing our government legacy systems that no longer serve us. At the end of the day, we must serve Hawaii's residents with transparency, efficiency and integrity. I'd like to thank Governor Green for appointing me in this role. And I'd like to thank you for this opportunity and humbly request your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So as our first witness, we have Governor Green. Anyone here speaking on behalf of Governor Green? Okay, next up we have. Anybody here wishing to testify in favor or in opposition to Director Betts's nomination? Okay, let's go from the front row first. Let's go front row first. So Ed Sniffin, DOT, come on up.
Hello Chair, San Bono de Tura, Vice Chair Aquino, members. Ed Sniffin with DOT. Thank you very much for allowing me to testify in support of Director designated Kathy Betts. If you look at their mission for DHS, very simply stated, to support the communities that we all serve. But the implementation for their program is absolutely complex. I was talking to Senator Awah and I was telling him, I'll never say that another department is more difficult than DOT. But this one might be. I mean, a lot of people's lives are riding on the decisions that they make, the implementation that they do throughout every day. So really appreciate everything she's done. Absolutely strong, committed, progressive and very caring leader that we absolutely need in this position. We hope you support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up Sharon Hurd, Department of Agriculture. Please proceed.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Sharon Hurd, Department of Agriculture. Here in strong support of the nomination and appointment of Kathy Betts. Excuse me, one of the things that stood out to me in her resume was that she's in control of $3.6 billion. That's a lot of funding to control and manage and not make the front page of the Star Advertiser. You know, it's just an amazing feat that she's doing. And I don't know of anybody else in the state that can do it as long as she's been doing it. And please give her a chance to do it again. So that's my testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up we have, okay, I got a list of witnesses, but since I decided to do it. Okay, Darrell Scoville, are you going to testify when we have this next person up? Come on up. Please identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Darra Carlin. I'm an independent domestic violence survivor advocate. So I work with women and children who have successfully escaped domestic violence, meaning they weren't killed in the process of escaping. Unfortunately, majority of my clients get entangled in the child welfare services system post-separation, usually because their abusers have called in a false report to child protective services. In the interest of discretion not afforded to my clients, I'm going to stand in staunch opposition to my written testimony that you have before you. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, please proceed. Identify yourself.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Nanohi Botello and I've been a victim advocate in our community and to mental health provider for over 30 years. I stand on my written testimony in strong opposition of Kathy Betts confirmation. It's not personal. I think she's brought a lot to the table. However, I am concerned with her capacity and ability to respond to the cases that we are looking at as advocates. One of the cases that I want to highlight in my testimony is the case of Ariel Sellers involving her siblings. I'm very concerned. I've been involved with this case because it was a murder case. And I am also advocate for families who lose loved ones through murder. So I got involved very early on. Her sibling, her older sibling is the most concerned. And we've written letters, her auntie who has been asking for placement for over a year and a half. It's qualified, licensed, they approved her. They promised her back in November. She's still not with place with the auntie. She's being held at Halekepa right now where she's been threatened, punched, seen guns and drugs in Halekepa that she's reported. The child, and she's reported to the social worker. And they still have not placed her with the auntie. And the auntie is waiting with bated breath to have her with her, her family member. So I'm very concerned about that because there hasn't been no response from Kathy Betts or any of the higher, she's sent emails all the way to the top to the embusman, attorneys, everything. And there's been very little response and yet she's qualified for everything. She's qualified for the licensing. She's done all the classes. She's passed everything with flying colors and she's highly qualified as an individual. She works for the DOE, the Deaf and Blind School. And she has certified a mental health provider. So she can very well take care of the sibling and provide mental health services with this sibling is getting very limited. And I just want to remind you that this sibling is a victim witness to a crime. And she needs to be protected and she's not right now. And we're very concerned that she's not with a blood relative who's been asking for over a year to have her. And I just want to close up by saying, please refer to John Heel's series Hawaii Versus Parental Rights, where he has outlined problems that have existed for many, many years. And I know that you have responded and I appreciate that.
So thank you.
So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Josh, your turn. Come on up. Thank you very much. Identify yourself, even though I know you, they don't.
Aloha, my name is Josh Franklin. I flew in actually from the Big Island. I'm a family advocate. I have a company called Hawaii Family Advocacy Group. I advocate for families that are impacted by child welfare. There is no question that Kathy Betts has a remark.
Are you in support or not?
Opposition of her continuing with the Department of Human Services. There's no question that she has a remarkable resume. I'm not here to argue that. What I am here to argue is that she has neglected to respond to numerous reports. I have emailed her directly and not been able to actually have a conversation with her in regards to the families that I represent on the Big Island. As you know, many of the families that are impacted by child welfare are Native Hawaiian families. For an example, I am of one of nine siblings. I grew up in Puna, struggling in poverty and could have been killed through the lack of social services. One thing that I want to address with you today, and I wrote it in my testimony, so I stand on this, is that the Department of Human Services is aware that Parents Incorporated supports parental alienation and professional misconduct up until including doctoring of false narratives of supervised visitation reports and having illegal practices. So they were sent audio evidence of malpractice in their office. They're notified that there's numerous social workers that discriminate against Native Hawaiian families and other families that are impacted. Kathy Betts has been informed numerous times. I've given her time after time opportunities to actually meet with me to discuss these particular issues. I have been personally retaliated against by social services. I graduate this semester from the university, my sociology degree. And in one of the instances of Parents Incorporated, they accidentally sent me an email indicating that they planned on blackballing me from social services because I've stood up and spoken for Native Hawaiian families and families that are being impacted by child welfare. I strongly oppose her continuing. I don't know who can do this position, but you need passion and drive behind assisting Kauai's families and children to do this job. I just don't think that she has the capability and it's not personal. Thank you so much.
Next up, come on up. Your name is?
Jason.
Jason Schmidt. Okay, Jason, please proceed.
First time. Anyway, I want to thank, I'm in opposition of Kathy Betts. I want to thank the committee for the opportunity to testify.
Could you speak directly to them?
I want to thank the committee the opportunity to testify. I'm a father that was discriminated against by and through DHS, through child welfare services. And as my mother's accused me of sexual molestation, our daughter who was two years old at the time. Now she has seven. I've not seen her since. She was, there was no response to child welfare or concern that I was being alienated. Today, I pray that I will be able to see my children and retain custody of them as their mother has and will continue to subject them to physical, psychological violence. I found the Hilo Child Welfare Office not to have any training regarding fathers who are alienated. As I spent thousands of dollars on psychosexual assessments, which stated I am not a pedophile. I called best offices numerous times and never to get calls. Returned by staff stated they would, someone would call me back. They never have. Here I am later, broken. I have been depressed and saddened. It's only with strong prayer and meditations that I have been able to. Can you? I fear I'm not the only father affected by this and fear my children are not the only ones harmed by Ms. Betts refusal to address valid concerns brought to her office. The CWS has since closed my case. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, are you here for, yes, are you here to testify?
Yes.
Okay, please come on up. Identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. I'm Lila King. I am a former worker with the Department of Human Services. I actually served under Director Bono as well as under Director Betts. I was a special assistant to the director. I'm here in my personal capacity to show my support. And I'm hearing the testimony that has come up in terms of opposition. So I'm just here to share with you from my personal opinion is I heard the words of compassion and passion for the families in the service. So I just want to reiterate the strong support here from those that do know Kathy Betts personally, have worked with her and have come to now call her as a friend. So I'm here to just attest to her commitment and passion and that the Department of Human Services is a huge department, as you've heard and as you all know. And her commitment to trying to fix and make things right, I truly believe. So again, I don't want to take up too much time, but I just wanted to throw that out to the committee as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, Joe Campos, are you going to be testifying? Okay, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Joseph Campos, Deputy Director, Department of Human Services, also here in my personal capacity. I stand on the written testimony that I submitted, but I do want to emphasize the fact that for the last two years and three months, I've had the distinct honor and pleasure to serve as Deputy Director under Director Betts. And I do need to really stress the fact that her resume is impressive and her intellect is matched by her absolute advocacy for people, for the most vulnerable people of Kauai and also by the fact that she is extremely compassionate and brings together all of the concerns of our various four divisions and different staff offices. So I stand in absolute strongest support of Director Betts nomination and confirmation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, could you come on up?
Hi, my name is Veronica Fuentes and I'm in strong support of Director Kathy Betts. I've worked with her formerly and I've known that she's a very compassionate, strong willed and very, I can't get my words out. She's very compassionate, strong willed and always looks out for the betterment of the children, her employees, as well as her friends and colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name's Deborah Zeisman. Our organization has testimony and Keopu will present it, but I just wanted to give some comments as an individual community member. So I have worked with Director Betts in a variety of roles for well over a decade. And I think she is exemplary. She is brilliant. She is compassionate. She tries her damn best every single day to do what is right for children, for families in the community. It's hard. I think it's a hard, hard job that she has had. And I just wanted to say I fully support her. So I just heard that. I fully support her. I think she is thoughtful and I think does her best in a very difficult job to work with community and to work with partners and with families. So very much hope you'll support her today.
Thank you very much. Next up. Okay, thank you very much. And you're still with Alot, there's? Okay, and Matt, behind you. Hi. You want to testify? No?
I'm just, my name's San Mijin Social Services Division Assistant Administrator, on this personal note, support.
Thank you. And Daisy, are you going to testify? Okay, please proceed. Come on up.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Daisy Hartsfield. I'm testifying as a private citizen, but I am the administrator for the Social Services Division. And I wanted to add to my testimony, just to share so that you can better understand the character of Kathy Betts and her leadership. I can honestly say, had it not been for Ms. Betts, I would not be at the Department of Human Services. I have been in my current position since October of 2020. And when I do receive complaints or I do receive concerns, I do my best to respond to them and to work with the community to try and improve the branches that are within my division, which is Child Welfare Services as well as Adult Protective and Community Services. So what I wanted to share was that in my role, I deal with those types of complaints. But in Ms. Betts world, it's even larger because she's dealing with four different divisions with families that are significantly impacted by the services we provide. So yes, she will get a lot of criticism, but I don't believe the criticism is indicative of her qualifications or her capability to lead the department. So I just wanted to share my personal experience. And I've been in several positions within state government. I've been with the Public Defender's Office. I've been with the Attorney General's Office. I've been with the judiciary. I've been with the prosecutor's office. And I have never experienced a leader who has been as compassionate, supportive, intelligent, and I heard the word progressive, and that's true, as Ms. Betts. She allows her leaders to lead with their strengths. And I think that's very rare. And I do believe that if she is not confirmed, I think you will see that it would be a detriment, not just to the department, but to the state and the families that are served by the department. So I just wanted to share that experience and I thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Okay, Chris, I can testify. Come on up.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Chris Arias, DA Director. And I am extremely honored to be here to testify in strong support of Director Betts. And as my time as part of the Green administration, she has demonstrated great leadership and collaboration with all the departments. Echoing what Sharon and Ed have said, that they have a very huge department to manage and handle. And her carryover from one administration to the other has provided the rest of us a lot of support and guidance and how to manage our departments. And so our department is quite busy as well, but they do an impressive job. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Judy, come on up. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Judy, come on up.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Judamore Peterson. I'm here, uh, testifying on, as an individual. Um, although I do work for the department, I have for, uh, a number of years. Uh, Kathy is actually the third director and, um, I can attest, uh, similar to my colleagues, that, uh, without her leadership and, uh, intelligence and compassion, over, especially over the past few years, uh, I would not be able to do the job that I've been able to do. Uh, she, she shows, um, not only compassion for the people that we serve, but actually also our staff, uh, who have really borne the brunt of much of the, of the hard, hard work of helping the state through the pandemic. And so I am in strong, strong support of, uh, of Kathy Betts's nomination and I urge your support too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm Pankaj. Former Director Pankaj, please come on up.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members. Good to see you all. Happy New Year. Uh, my name is Pankaj Winut. I'm testifying in my personal capacity. Uh, I was the former Director of Human Services and one of those, uh, privileges I had to actually call Kathy at home and spring a surprise on her and ask her to be my Deputy Director in 2017. If, uh, she can vouch for it, she's thought that Principal's Office has called and she's going to be punished. You are not going to find a better human being, a more qualified person, with tremendous character and integrity to do the job she's doing. I can assure you that every day since I have left the job, every day I keep track of how it's going, how things are, and I have a lot of contacts within the Department of Human Services. And they, they do talk to me about a lot of things and I bump into them at Costco or, or Walmart or wherever. They have nothing but highest of regards and respect for Kathy. Because we chit chat and you know, it's, uh, it's, we talk story. And in talk story, what comes out is that department is in very capable hands. And her resumes, people are talking about excellent resume. I think it's body of work that resume doesn't reflect what she has to go through on daily basis to get things done, to ensure that our children are safe, our vulnerable adults are safe. We are providing the benefits and services that are required. It's a lot of work, but, but with 3.6 billion they are talking about and two, 2,000 plus staff and hundreds of contractors. It's a very complex and difficult job. And I think she has done it tremendously. Yes, there are concerns raised today. But it's, uh, something that she needs to look at. She needs to really find inner strength and also work collaboratively with the community and those who are aggrieved or at least perceived to be aggrieved. She should be working with them and, and come up with the solutions that are needed because this department is integral to the well-being of our state. I'll stop at that and I'll just tell you, please support Kathy because, uh, those who are in opposition and those who are in support, you'll all, you'll all make the right decision because it is a very difficult and complex job and she's up for it. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, come on up. Okay, thank you. And? Okay, we have Scott Morishige.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members. Um, Scott Morishige, testifying in strong support of Director Betts. I'm testifying in my personal capacity, but also currently work for the department as the Administrator of the Benefit Employment and Support Services Division and formerly worked for DHS as the Governor's Corner in Homelessness. I've known Kathy for a number of years, not only as an employee, but also as a fellow advocate in the community. Back in my days as Executive Director of Focus, I first met her advocating for increase in the minimum wage and other policies really serve those who are most vulnerable in our community. And that fierce advocacy, uh, for those most in need and really her commitment to doing what's right is something she's carried forward, um, into the, her position as a leader of our department. She's really been, um, a leader who leads our department by example. And she's provided tremendous support to employees and staff in our department, not only in Betsi, but in the other divisions as well. And working in DHS is a very difficult job. There's a lot of stress. There's a lot of criticism. And her leadership and support really has made our department better because of it. So thank you again for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. And I see Bartane, you're going to be testifying? I know that, so I'm writing it down. Neither gets Scott Morishige.
I stand on Scott's written testimony. I just feel compelled to, to come forward because I was part of that effort, that coalition that gelled, uh, 10 years ago or so with Kathy Betts and with Jenny Lee and Scott Morishige and, and a handful of others. And it was, in my experience of doing advocacy, and I've been doing it for a long time, it was one of the best experiences I had. And Kathy played an essential role in that. She has the temperament, the intelligence, the courage and the integrity to work well with people and solve things. So I don't have a close experience in, in her particular job here, but I know of her dedication and of her intelligence and of her integrity. And it's such a thankless job, the state would really be at a loss if we were to let go of somebody who's foolish enough to be willing to do this work. And I think she should hold on to her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. But, okay, see page 2. Okay, thank you very much. And, um, no, come on up.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Uh, my name is K. Opu Relitz. I'm the Director of Early Learning and Health Policy with Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks. You have our written testimony. I wanted to add to that, on a personal level, um, I first met Kathy when I was Hapi with my very first child and she was at the Commission on the Status of Women. And I had no idea what I was going to do in state government, trying to take maternity. Um, and with my first child and kind of continued doing the job I wanted to do in the Director's Office at DHS. Um, after that, I had years of experience, um, quite frankly, becoming a friend, um, and colleague with Kathy um, and considering her a mentor. And that was spent over long hours, sometimes into the evening, in very, very difficult situations, um, dealing with some of the the hardest situations that DHS has to deal with by her side. Um, and from there, um, I do consider her a friend and a colleague as well as a mentor. And when I left state government just last year, um, and went over to the advocacy side of things, I was told by a colleague in another state, don't be surprised if your friends in state government stop answering your calls at some point. But what I want to mention, and it's, it's highlighted in our testimony as well, is that Kathy has not stopped answering our calls. When we call her and it is not always to say, great job, you're doing amazing things. It is also to point out where we think things could be done better. She still answers the calls with grace and with understanding and with an eye toward making things better and making sure that when we suggest solutions and when she works with her own staff, that she is considering the, the true lives of folks like childcare providers and families like mine who are just struggling to get by day in and day out. So I just wanted to share that, add to that, and thank you very much. We stand in, I should have said this from the beginning, I stand in strong support and so does H. Can't Speaks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I misspoke. I do have, um, written testimony. Okay, so I see, um, the last, yeah, and I see Director Fink after you. Come on in. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Cross. Okay, so Director Fink, are you going to be testifying? Please proceed. Come on up.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. My name is Kenny Fink with the Department of Health. Uh, I was actually in my office watching this on YouTube. Um, you know, when I actually, uh, was hearing some testimony in opposition and I started walking over. And I respect the concerns that have been raised, uh, and the experience of, of those individuals, and I'm sure Kathy takes that to heart. I'm here to testify in strong support of Kathy, uh, and that's what motivated me to come down here today. Uh, I've known her over many years, uh, and have found her to, um, work professionally with grace, with a real personal commitment, um, to the work of the Department of Human Services and serving the people of our state. Uh, the relationship between the Department of Health and Department of Human Service is a very important one. Uh, and she has been a strong supporter of collaboration between the departments. So again, I'm here to just communicate, um, my strong support for Kathy Betts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody on Zoom? Uh, nobody? Okay, I'm just going to read over the ones we have written testimony for that hasn't spoken up. And that would be Jay Gutiay in support, Director of, um, Labor Industrial Relations. Scott Glenn, Office of Planning Sustainable Development and Support. Don Chang, DLNR in support. Gary Suganuma, Department of Taxation in support. Um, Luis Salavera, Department of Budget and Finance in support. Major General Kenhara, Department of Defense in support. Sabrina Nasser, Budget and Finance in support. Hakim Wasana, Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support. Gail Phankton Vekley, Hawaii Family Support Institute in support. Paula Arseno in Aloha Care in support. Nancy Creedman of Diva in support. Pamela Ferguson Gray in support. Tony Bisson, Pu'au Foundation in support. Eric Ave, Hawaii Primary Care Association in support. Lori Tocichi of Epic Ohana in support. Carrie Urosovich of Early Childhood Action and Strategy in support. Karen Tan, Child and Family Service in support. Ryan Kusumoto, Parents and Child, Children Together in support. K. O. P. Relitz for Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks in support. Um, Sean Kanai Apuni, Partners in Development Foundation in support. Hawaii Association of Health Plans in support. Peggy Mirza of Hawaii Public Health Institute in support. Mihoko Ido Sanai in support. Angelina Mercado, State Coalition Against Domestic Violence in support. Doug Murdock, Office of Enterprise Technology Services in support. Patricia McManaman, Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights in support. Marilyn Yamamoto in opposition. Delia Ulima in support. Noah DeWiler Pavia in support. Catherine Cornega in support. And we have Vegas other people all in support. And Darah Carlin in opposition. Anybody else who I haven't called wishing to testify? Members, any questions? So, um, I have questions. So come on up. So, since you have been here since our former director resigned.
Correct.
And at a time when COVID was high, um, do you have any change in policy since you've been?
Change in policy or change in vision?
Direction, change in vision.
Um, you know, all of, uh, let me preface this by saying that I've been attached to the Department of Human Services since 2011. I prior, uh, represented Child Welfare Services Branch at the AGs back in 2006. So I've been with the department for many years. I've worked alongside former directors um, and former deputy directors to co-create this vision of a multi-generational approach to tending intergenerational poverty to ensuring that folks can access benefits in a desiloed, um, government system um, to ensure that our staff is well taken care of and our workforce can be retained through, um, self-care and trauma-informed care and, um, strengthening the, the workplace to be a safe and healthy work environment. So I would say that the vision was created many years ago, but we've built on it. We've continued IT modernization. Specifically, that started under Director Pat McManaman, who submitted testimony and support when the Affordable Care Act passed in 2010. And we've continued those IT modernization efforts till now. We're in the last kind of branch of our IT modernization. We started with COLEA. We're in process of the BES, which is our Financial Assistance Benefits. And then we are, uh, completing the RFP for our Comprehensive Child Welfare Information System.
So basically, you're saying that you, you saw the vision that prior directors have and so far you're building on it.
Correct.
Okay, um, well, as you can hear from the testimony, there are concerns regarding the Child Welfare.
Absolutely.
Okay, what are your, what's your response to that?
Response to the concerns about child welfare cases. If I can also preface this by saying, when I represented Child Welfare Services Branch back in 2006 as a, as a deputy AG, I saw concerns. I saw issues within the system that I wanted to fix and that is why I came back to the department. As, as people mentioned, I, uh, it's, it's a very difficult job and there's a lot to do. Um, but I'm committed to strengthening the Child Welfare Information System. I'm committed to strengthening our Child Welfare Services workforce. I see day in and day out the work that they do. I've seen, um, and litigated those cases. They are not easy cases. Um, we have concerns come in on active cases that are court-involved every day. If they are represented by counsel, as you know, Chair, I, I cannot get involved. I address those concerns by letting my leadership know that, um, there are concerns in the community. They need to take a closer look at the cases. Uh, as a former advocate and someone that represented survivors, um, I've done the restraining orders. I've seen the child abuse and neglect reports. I've read the Safe Family Home reports where there are egregious allegations. Um, and I do understand that there is a balance that has to be struck between, um, removing a child and ensuring that a family can remain intact with services in place. Um, and that's something that we have implemented with the Family First Plan Hawaii. We were the first in Region Nine in the, in the, in the nation to get our Family First Plan, um, approved by Administration for Children and Families. Um, since then, we've, oh, you know, through those services, in-home services, supportive services, we've had around 200 cases with, or 200 individual children involved with Family First. And around, I want to say 142 were able to stay in home with supportive services. Um, it's not an easy job. Um, I've seen them, you know, work weekends, jumping fences and encampments to, to rescue children, um, in unsafe situations. And so I understand absolutely the difficulty of the work that they do every day. And I also understand the concerns of the people in opposition behind me because I've been in those positions of opposing what this department does. Um, and so I think being able to, as Scott so eloquently referenced, you know, bridging that gap between advocate and government, it's, it creates this ability to see kind of all of the issues that a department might face. And I, I feel like my advocacy and my work in government within, um, the department has enabled me to see different solutions that perhaps have not been implemented before. For example, more comprehensive work with the community, listening, um, listening tours of, of communities to ensure that folks feel like they are being heard, that their concerns are being heard and that we're putting those into place. Um, our Child Welfare Services Branch Administrator, Eladine Olivao, she has been, um, a line worker, a manager, a supervisor, a section administrator. Um, and I see the amount of work she puts into addressing these concerns. Um, she's, she's tough as nails but caring and I, and I, I, I support the work that they do and I understand the concerns that are there as well.
Okay, so I mean, let, um, let's talk a little bit about that. Uh, the Ariel Sellers, um, bill that passed both House and Senate last year was vetoed by the government.
Correct.
Okay, and I think we've done in this session, um, stuff to fix it. But, uh, what has your department done in response to that vetoed bill?
We continue to, uh, meet with the Malama Ohana Organization. Um, we've supported their legislation moving forward to support a budget request to help facilitate that cross-sector and community stakeholder conversation that is critically needed. Um, not just for our staff, but for the healing of our community. We've also requested, um, shortage differentials for our child welfare workers because we do have, you know, vacancy rates and high turnover um, to ensure that folks can be retained and stay.
In this new budget, the, the
Correct.
The salary differentials that wasn't there last.
That is what we are requesting, correct.
And the, the family first, which basically, um, a number of these advocates are concerned with that the I guess knee-jerk removal of their children without due process. I mean, how do we, how do we tell them that their concerns are being addressed?
I, I would look to the legislative intent of, of this legislature, um, you know.
But what about the department itself? What kind, what, what kind of procedures are you implementing to ensure that we don't have this knee-jerk type of?
Well, we are, um, thank you, Chair. We are implementing family first, which, uh,
Could you explain that?
Sure, it's, um, we revisit our policies and procedures, um, when a recommendation is made for a child to be removed to look for protective factors of a family member so that a child can stay in the home. Um, that doesn't mean that it's not unsafe, but it does mean that if we are addressing the safety factors and a parent is being protected, we can hopefully leave that child in the home and, and that child is safe. However, like I mentioned earlier, there's a, a very delicate nuanced balance that our social workers have to make within quick decision times, oftentimes, to decide, is this person in imminent harm? Do we need to remove? Is this child going to be very injured if we leave them there? And I think that is a really And I think that is a really difficult job that they have. But it's something through Family First Hawaii, we're looking at ways. We have diversion programs, we have family strengthening services, we have voluntary case management. So there are many, many ways and many different programs that we've put into place over the last two decades to ensure that an automatic removal doesn't happen.
Okay, and when, when, when have we started, um, implementing those family firsts?
Family First was implemented in 2022, so we just made a year anniversary. However, VCM, Voluntary Case Management, Family First, or Family, um, Strengthening Services, those have been in place for probably a decade at this point in time.
Do we have monies for increased, um, training of the social workers to ensure that the kind of cultural issues that was brought up here by the opponents, uh, it is, is starting or, or is being implemented?
We have, uh, requested additional funding for increased training.
And that would be in this new budget?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Um, another thing that came up, that didn't come up at this hearing is, at the time when you came in, we had increased Medicare and Medicaid applications, which last, I think last month or past week, uh, federal government has started putting out press releases that all these people who have signed up and qualified may have problems re-qualifying. How are you folks addressing this weaning off period?
Right, um, we have 12 months to recertify 467,000 individuals in the state. Um, we actually have been working, our MedQuest team has been working on this for over a year to look at ways that we could do better outreach. So we've got outreach, we're working with, uh, communications organization to ensure folks know. We start, um, recertifying in, um, uh, March, actually, sorry, April 1st, 2023. Um, and we will take the full 12 months to do that. So we will likely take about one-twelfth of each, um, each beneficiary each month to ensure recertification. Um, folks will start to get a letter. We're urging community members to update contact information so that we have most up-to-date contact information. And they could do that by, um, visiting our website and providing updated contact information.
So will there be a pub, because all of us are gonna be getting phone calls.
Right.
From our constituents and, um, community leaders are gonna find that people who thought that they were gonna get SNAP benefits, they go to the store and all of a sudden the SNAP card is gonna be, uh, yeah.
The SNAP, so.
So how, how do we, what, what's your public information campaign gonna be hopefully in the next couple of weeks regarding informing people that they have to be recertified and not be surprised when they get to the supermarket checkout?
Sure.
And find out that they have no money on their SNAP benefit.
For SNAP, so, um, two things, Chair. The SNAP emergency allotment that the federal government ended, those payments will, the last payment will be in March of 2023. So we've been working with.
That's this month.
Yep, we've been talking with, uh, communicating with the Food Bank and Ulu Pono Initiative to ensure that our community members know what resources are out there. It's unfortunate that the federal government decided to end that additional payment because it was an additional $18 million per month coming into, um, families that needed it and also flowing into our economy. Um, I, I guess the bright side of that is that the Consolidated Appropriations Act did make permanent pandemic EBT. We were the first state in the nation to just get our plan approved. So those benefits will be accessible for families with children. Um, on the MedQuest side, as I mentioned, we'll start sending out letters. They will be notified, um, of the recertification process. Not every single person will be recertified in, you know, that month because it is a 12-month process. We're letting folks know to look out for a pink letter. That will be their, their information specific to their, um, Medicaid recertification. So we're doing kind of a all-hands-on-deck communications plan.
Okay, and this is also part of your, um, I remember when you, when you first got in and we had to do an emergency appropriations for monies or the shortfall for the GA benefits.
Correct.
What I'm concerned about is, are you folks like ahead of the curve? That in the event that, are we gonna need to have an emergency appropriation before the end of session? And so are you folks looking at as to how much that's going to be to ensure that people don't just not have any food?
Currently, we do not have an, uh, uh, an over, no, we don't have an overage of general assistance. We, we actually have budget adequate for the general assistance. But for, for SNAP, families will continue to get their SNAP benefits. They just will not get that emergency allotment that was afforded by the federal government during the pandemic.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Senator Moriwaki, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for taking on the homelessness initiative. And one more thing, in addition to long-term care and, and, um, and SNAP and all of the projects that you have in your, in your table. Um, but can you tell us where you're going with that and what the vision is for serving the homeless? Especially the coordination among all the agencies that are involved and, and where you, you intend to go with, um, the homeless program?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Senator. Um, obviously, um, providing housing for homelessness is one of Governor Green's top priorities. We're continuing to work with the New Office on Housing and Homelessness, led by James Koschiba, who's the, um, who's just taken on that role as Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness in January. We're working closely with HUD and with, um, the Continuum of Care, PIC and BTG. We continue to work with, um, our, our counties to ensure that funds can get to them quickly. We recently approved our, uh, our ESG grants that come directly from HUD to us to go directly to the county so that counties can access those funds quickly. Um, we're also continuing to look at ways that Calhale can, um, provide housing for, for, um, those living on the street.
One of the areas was, um, having the data necessary for us to place people, for us to know who, who needs services and be able to have a data clearinghouse. Are you working on something where we have the technology systems starting to be developed? And, and what kind of data we can have that can be shared with providers as well as the homeless?
Sure, uh, Senator, we did put in a budget request for additional funds to help build that database. And we have been in communications with, uh, Partners in Care so that they're aware of what, what data needs we might have to make better data and policy decisions within the department. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Senator Awal.
Yeah, staying on homeless, I'm on your guys' website right now. It says the Homeless Programs Office no longer maintains a reporting hotline. I get a bunch of calls in my area, Haleiva, Kahuku, about homeless problems. One of my constituents almost got stabbed by, by one of the homeless allegedly. Are you guys gonna make some number or have staff or our constituents can call you guys up to, to report?
Uh, I believe that, um, James Koschiba's office does accept calls on that. But, you know, it's, it's a small office, so I don't know what kind of capacity they would have to accept all of the calls. I would urge folks, if they believe a crime is happening, to call, to call 911. Um, let me, can I, I get more information on that hotline, Senator, and get back to you on that?
And then, um, one program that seems to work, you know, just something that from my past career, we, we saw and the public seems to like it, um, is sending the homeless home. I think we've sent almost 800 people home, a 2% return rate, HLT, I think it was. Do you guys have any money in the budget for that, to send homeless back from where they came from, if they're not from here?
I know that there are a few bills still moving, Senator. Um, we just heard it on the, on the House side a couple of days ago. Um, and I know that IHS is in support of getting more funds to enable folks who do want to come, go home. Um, but I would note that it has been a small number. Um, anecdotally, we know that it's a smaller number because the majority of our houseless individuals are, have been in Hawaii for at least the last five years. But I do understand the need to balance that and ensure that there's funds to, to, um, assist people in getting back to family and supportive systems. So, um, we don't have funding right now, I believe, but we.
Is it something you support, that, that type of program? Do you support that? Is that something that you would push for?
I would support, um, with certain limitations. Um, I do support, um, being able to reunite families, absolutely. And I would support being able to support, I would be, I would support getting individuals back into, um, treatment and care and with, with individuals that care about them and will provide a support system. However, I also think it needs to be balanced with, um, kind of the narrative out there that we have all these people being shipped to us and, um, we don't have the funds to take care of them. We don't have the housing for them because I don't think that's, I don't think that's absolutely accurate. So I, I would need to see what, what that looks like and, um, but I do support reuniting families, absolutely.
Okay, and then lastly.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, last I saw from the Ways and Means, you guys had the most, um, work-from-home position, 670. Has that number gone down?
I would need to look at, um, right now about 33% of our staff telework, but it's just one, one day a week, the majority of them. So, um, it's not like, uh, full offices are, are closed and, and vacant. Um, but I can get that most recent data. Because the telework policy just got, uh, you know, revised and re-implemented, I'd need to look to see how many people are still, people are still, um, filling out, and basically a form to ensure that they can be allowed to telework. So those numbers might have shifted since the new telework policies came out from D-Herd.
Sorry, just so I caught that, um, since we don't have replay over here. The 670 workers is 33% of the staff?
The last I looked at the, um, the numbers of teleworking was roughly around 33% of staff that would telework about one, one day a week.
Okay, and then going forward, your stance on that type of work-from-home policy?
I support, I support telework, I support, um, hybrid work, I support digital work where people can do it effectively, efficiently, professionally and with privacy. Um, we have had folks come back into the office because they didn't feel they had enough privacy. And I, I think that that's an important factor to be considered. Um, I do think it's a retention and recruitment tool, especially for our younger generation that could potentially find higher pay in private sector. Um, and it's, and it's, uh, treated as, not as a necessarily a perk, but they're really looking to market themselves. And there's not a lot of younger people that want to come into state government. Um, I came into state government when I was, I think, 26 years old. So, um, and back then it was, we want to be able to have retirement in, in, you know, 40 years and whatnot. So, um, I think that it can be used effectively as a recruitment and a retention tool, but I, I recognize that it's not for everybody. Um, we have a lot of front-facing programs that absolutely it, it just wouldn't work for. And then we have, um, others that it, it is extremely effective for them and the work that they do and their work product.
Understood, and you know, just circle.
No, you're, you're good. Okay, go ahead then.
Circling back to the start, my last one. Um, that reporting hotline, ha, i-if more of those workers were back in the office, would that change? Would they be able to have a hotline or is that totally different?
I think that, I would need to look into that, but it's, uh, we all have equipment with, you know, computers, digital telephones and all of that in, in our work-from-home spaces. So I don't think that would have necessarily an impact, but I would need to look into that further and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Senator Tino.
Uh, so, thank you Director for being here. Uh, mainly, I just want to ask about any vacancies, high-level vacancies that you do have. Uh, mainly with, uh, what was it, with, uh? But do you have any high-level vacancies that are considered priority? I know that vocational, uh, we have vocational, um, o-office that you guys were, um, vacant with certain positions. Is that still vacant at this time and what's the plan to, uh, fill them?
Um, I would need to see specifically which positions, uh, Vice Chair, but high level, I would say that our, um, we've had a lot of staff offices and divisions doing reorgs just to become more efficient and effective. And so some of those positions have been caught up in reorg. For example, our, um, Office of, um, IT, uh, there are some high-level positions that are vacant in, in that area because of a pending reorganization. But we have been recruiting and aggressively trying to get folks into those positions as soon as we can. Um, for child welfare, those are also highly critical positions that we need to fill. We've been, um, instituting the Wiki Wiki Hire System that, um, we implemented specifically for child welfare. This is maybe, you know, five years ago, um, to shorten the time that it takes to hire and get folks onboarded. Um, as, as you probably know, and you've heard from other people, that it, it can take a little bit, a lengthy time to get folks onboarded. So we're trying, um, everything that we can to recruit and, and retain people in our positions. Um, it's unfortunate, but across the nation, human services workforces are, are struggling to fill because of, you know, the burnout that folks have talked about, the, the kind of relentless pace of the last three years. So we really have to look at ways that we can, um, care for our staff and ensure that they want to stay on board and that they don't burn out.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to follow up on that.
Senator Moriwaki.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just to follow up on that, because we are looking at workforce shortage across the board. And you've got professionals that you need to, in, well, it's child welfare or in, in some of the other services that you have. Um, what are you doing in terms of re-looking, at least currently or to the future, how you might restructure and/or use interns from the UH? Or how might you bring in more staff that you can, you have the kind of dedicated staff to do this kind of work? That's very stressful.
Sure, thank you. Well, I, I know that the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations has a new internship program. So we're encouraging folks, um, in the community to apply for internships that way. We also have, um, the Hawaii Child Welfare Education Collaborative, also known as HEQIC. Um, we love our alphabet soup at, at DHS. Um, that's a partnership with the School of Social Work. And so it enables students that are getting their MSWs at the School of Social Work to have their masters paid for, and then they agree and commit to come work for child welfare services for a number of years. So that's been, um, we've had multiple cohorts for, for many years with that, and that's been successful. Um, we're also looking to, um, to find other interns in different areas. And it's difficult with some of our programs because of the private, um, information. And so we have to really be careful about where we place folks and what kind of access to information that they have. But we're looking at all of those options. We've also met with the School of Social Work, Shaminide, HPU, UH, to really look at ways that we can build up that workforce to get the human services workforce that we're gonna need in the next, you know, few decades as people retire. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, um, I'm just gonna make a last comment. As you know, from, uh, you have, your agency has the largest budget in the state. And you affect everybody's lives. Your department affects everybody's lives, um, disabilities, Kupuna Care, childcare, SNAP, Medicaid, um, homelessness. So there are gonna be complaints. And, you know, I have always been an advocate of the Family First Program, pushing you folks to get your act together. And it's gratifying that you folks finally got, got it together. But as you can tell from the people behind you, they are gonna be continuing to watch you. So I am going to, um, hope that the training continues. We understand that the vacancies are huge. We understand that there is a need for telework, especially on my island, where, uh, child welfare services need to go investigate hundreds of miles. Okay, in between, and just to ensure that when families are placed in different homes, that they would be able to visit. And that's one of the reasons I had pushed for Family First. Because if you don't, if you don't need to put, place kids in different homes, but keep them intact, um, I think that helps everybody. Okay, um, so, other than that, do we need to recess for decision-making? Are we ready to proceed? Okay. So for GM 512, Chair's recommendation is to advise and consent. Any comments, questions and concerns? Okay, no, Vice Chair for the vote. Chair, vote aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, recommendation of the Chair's to pass advising consent, GM 512. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Moriwaki.
Aye.
Senator Shimobu Kuro.
Aye.
Senator Awal.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, we are in adjournment.
Thank you.